Okay, I'd like to call the meeting for March 19th, 2024 to order. If the clerk could please take the roll call.
Trustee Ayani, trustee Daley.
Here.
Trustee Givanas.
Here.
Trustee Leahy absent, trustee Maderas.
Here.
Trustee Powers absent.
If you can all stand and join me in the pledge. We have the village board meeting minutes from March 5th of 2024. Are there any questions or clarifications?
No.
If not, if I could have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ayani, Daley, Givanas. Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, Mayor Prine.
Four. Hey, the first item under my president's comments is I would like to have Officer Begalatia come forward. I hope I didn't butcher that too bad, and I'll give you the oath of office. Pitaglia.
It's like an Irish. I think he's Irish. What is he? Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, those were all my comments at this point. Carrie Anne, do we have any presentations? Correct. Okay, the next item on the is a public hearing regarding the amendment to the pre-annexation agreement for 1460 West Thorndale Avenue, or Thorne, yeah, West Thorndale. If I could have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four. Okay, well, this is the public hearing for the pre-annex, the amendment to the pre-annexation agreement for 1460 West Thorndale Avenue. Does anyone have any comments they would like to present to the board? All right, hearing none, I would ask then for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four. Audience participation, do we have anyone signed up? Deanne?
No, there's no one signed up.
All right, so we'll go to the first readings. Community Development Committee, trustee Givanas.
Okay, we have a recommended motion to authorize a first amendment to the redevelopment agreement for Itasca Station at 115 and 125 West Orchard. That's Itasca Station PC 23-003. Holiday Properties has requested an amendment to the redevelopment agreement, RDA, for the Itasca Station to adjust the timeframes for acquisition, groundbreaking, and demolition due to unforeseen circumstances that are outside the control of the developer.
Carrie Anne did speak with them. Did you want to add something to that, Carrie?
Yeah, so we did go back and forth with the developer over the last few weeks. Unfortunately, they're unable to be here today. The somebody was scheduled to be here, but there was a medical issue that prevents them from being here. They will be here at the subsequent meeting. But just to kind of explain what's going on, the lending for the project got a little bit off kilter, and so they're going to need to close on the project in the fall all with kind of one closing. And that meant that instead of two, they were going to do the land acquisition early and then move forward with demo and do the project construction loan in the fall, in September. And so because of how the financing ended up working out, they're going to have to do the acquisition and property loan at the same time, which is, needs to kind of correspond with when they're going to be doing construction, which will be obviously in the fall of this year. So in moving that, the actual property owner currently, the timeframe didn't work out for them to be out very quickly after closing because they have a particularly busy time of year in their business at that point. And so they were exercising, wanted to exercise, they had a four month, they're going to exercise a three month after that property closes to be out. So this just adjusts those timeframes. Holiday wanted me to just let the board know they couldn't be here today, that they are committed to this project, that these are just kind of some unforeseen circumstances that came up along the way. They're just adjusting the timeframes in order to make it work with the lending, but in no way are they backing away from this project. They expect to do, in fact, they're committing to do kind of an early demolition and get it started and then finish off the demolition. They want to be able to move forward the project before the end of the year, which was the case originally. So there's not significant changes, they're mostly to timing and deadlines.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? There ain't none, I'll make that motion.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, sorry. Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four.
That's all I have.
Capital Infrastructure Committee, trustee Ayani.
Three items on the agenda. The first one is regarding the low bid from Muskrat Painting and Decorating for the two, the 2024 repainting program. This is for the streetlights in the amount of $60,000. Your packet did include items, memo to Carrie Anne from Mike recommending approval, a memo to Mike from Marcus, breakdown of the bids, also a map indicating which ones would be painted. There were two bids, there was quite a bit of difference between the two of them. For whatever reason, the contractor, Muskrat, did paint them previously. They'd worked for us previously. That was the budgeted amount. This actually came in a little less than that. All in, including replacement of the lenses, would be just south of $1,650 a pole. Budgeted item, needs to be done. Any questions? I'd motion to approve accepting the low bid from Muskrat Painting and Decorating for the 2024 Streetlight Repainting Program for the amount of $58,856.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, and Mayor Prine.
Four.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced their name. How do you say it really?
It's Muscat.
Muscat, no, Muscat. I got to get a new brain surgeon, I'm sorry, guys.
Just to be official.
Okay, thank you. Next item is regarding approval of accepting the low bid from ALAMP contract contractors for the 2024 Street Program in the amount of $450,000. Your pack included several items, a memo from Mike to Carrie Anne, a memo from Marcus to Mike recommending approval, copy of the bid sheet, there were seven active bidders. It did come in underestimated by about 20%, so is a budgeted item. This amount is about 80% of the budget. ALAMP has worked for the village in the past. Any questions? I'd motion to approve accepting the low bid from ALAMP Concrete Contractors, Inc. for the 2024 Street Maintenance Program in the amount of $459,023.76.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four.
Next item is considering amending the ordinance that allows reimbursement, reimbursement to mailbox owners for mailbox damage resulting from direct contact during snow plowing operations. This would be tidied up to include it from indirect. At $100 each, basically what happens often is the mailboxes are mounted on wooden posts, the wooden posts eventually decay, the weight of the wet snow when plowing pushes the post over, it hits the ground, and that's what the damage is caused. The mailbox is not getting hit by the trucks, the staff is not out cowboying, running into these things. I think this cleans it up, they're not hitting it with baseball bats. It does change the language, which will help staff deal with it. Historically, there's been 10 to 12 a year on the far years. This should allow us to reimburse up to $100. Does not include monument mailboxes, those would have to, those do not rot out. But the weight of the snow eventually maybe could change it, but we don't repair monument mailboxes. Is there any question, or Mike, anything to add on that?
Yeah, just to clarify a little more, a lot of times a mailbox goes down, the resident's not aware that their mailbox post is decayed over the years and at the ground level. So obviously, they, you know, tend to disagree with Public Works' outlook that it was because of the mail, the structure of the pole or deficiency of the post it was on. So I think it just gets really arguing that goes between Public Works and residents about it, that's all.
Any questions? Then I'd motion to approve amending ordinance 95 dot 56D allowing for reimbursement to mailbox owners for damage to mailbox resulting from direct or indirect contact during snowplow operations, not to exceed $100.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, and Mayor Prine.
Four.
The only other thing I have is it's, you guys know that lights colors change in Usher Park? Did you see when they were green for St. Patrick's?
I did, they looked pretty, it looked cool.
I think Mike and his team does, it's pretty cool when they do that, so.
They had a different color for.
The holiday, Memorial Day.
Yeah.
I think they were, so it's pretty cool.
It looks good. It looks cool.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Finance and Operations Committee, trustee Daley.
Thank you, Mayor Prine. In everybody's packet was the monthly financial report prepared by Director Ramsey and her team, ending January 31st, 2024. If you reviewed the report, there's a lot of good news in here, but what I'm going to do is pass it over to Carrie Anne to please walk through and summarize some of the high points and give us an outlook for the rest of the year. But as I said, we're looking pretty good. So Carrie Anne, if you would, please.
Yeah, thank you. I would echo that, this is a, you know, is a reflection of conservative budgeting and as far as the revenue pictures, and so we're hitting all of our numbers. So I'm just going to go through, obviously, we are nine months in, or 75% of our fiscal year, so this is the third quarter. Village has received 104% of the budgeted revenues to date. Now, that's obviously because 100% of property taxes are collected fairly early in June and September, so we're not expecting that number to go up a lot, but we're already hit our number there. So go down to Public Works, and it's over budget in the revenue aisle by about $40,000, and that's because of we had sale of vehicles that actually came in higher than was originally anticipated, so we have some extra revenue in that area. Building permit revenues are 173% of budget, and that's because we've had a couple of very large projects come in, the one at 1460 Thorndale and 255 Pierce. So continuing on, we are, our expenditure and, and the corporate fund, we're about 59% of budgeted expenditures, so we're just slightly under budget. We had some staffing vacancies and people out because of workers' compensation, especially in PD, so we have PD overtime over by about 9%. So hotel tax fund, that continues to be good news. We moderated what we were looking for in revenue there, and actually revenues are in at 84%, and we're expecting that they will hit 100% by the end. Going down to Capital Projects Fund, I think what's important here is we have our non-home rule sales tax, it's exceeding budget at 94% right now, and again, 75% of the year. So we're actually seeing that perform very strong as well. Debt service payments, you'll find that in the Capital Projects Fund, we've made 100% of our debt service payments there, 100% in SSA IV, and 100% in the water and sewer funds. So we're done with all of our substantial debt. Moving on to pooled cash, we budgeted in a deficit this year at about $17 million for completion of capital projects. The deficit is because we saved for those capital or had bonding for them, and then we expend them in a different year. Right now, the deficit is only about 3.2 million, and that's because not all of the bills for those projects have gone through at this point, so we're anticipating it to come to fairly close to that 17 million. Most of those projects were actually started and will be completed in this fiscal year. So total pooled cash right now is $37.8 million, and that's kind of the highlights. If I, the only thing that I would mention on the, the actual summary of the tax revenues is utility tax. We are starting to see that trend significantly upwards. We think that that's related to MTT data, and, you know, them ramping up usage, and that's where we are likely seeing those numbers come in. So we continue to monitor those. Everything else is summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Great, I'd like to just thank Jennifer and her team again for doing such a great job with this report, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was just information. Okay, Intergovernmental Committee, trustee Ayani.
No report.
Okay, we have tonight's consent agenda. There are nine items on the consent agenda. Item A is approving ordinance 2105 dash 24, approving the 2024 Village of Itasca zoning map update. Item B is approving ordinance 2106 dash 24, approval of PC 24 dash 001, a request for tax amendments to the zoning ordinance. Item C is approving ordinance 2107 dash 24, approving a request for annexation for the properties located at 19 West 132, 19 West 116, 19 West 106, 19 West 99, 19 West 71, 19 West 70, 19 West 48, 10 West 31. Is that a, is that a typo? No? Okay. 19 West 30, 19 West 11, and 19 West 10, and parcel 03 dash 05 dash 203 dash 100, vacant Marino Court, Itasca, Illinois 60143, in addition to the Marino Court right-of-way. Item D is approving ordinance 2108 dash 24, approving request for map amendment from R1 Single Family Residents to OR Office Research District, an annexation for the properties located at 19 West 132, 19 West 116, 19 West 106, 19 West 099, 19 West 071, 19 West 070, 19 West 048, 10 West 031, 19 West 030, 19 West 011, 19 West 010, and parcel 03 dash 05 dash 203 dash 010, vacant Marino Court, Itasca, Illinois, in addition to the Marino Court right-of-way. Item E is approving resolution 1517 dash 24, accepting the low bid for the Schiller Street Pond BMT from Berger Excavating Contractors in the amount of $1,428,174.70. Item F is approving resolution 15 dash, 1518 dash 24, accepting the low bid from Globe Construction for the fiscal year 2024 sidewalk removal and replacement project in the amount of $58,875. Item G is approving resolution 1519 dash 24 to extend the street sweeping services agreement with Lakeshore Recycling Services for three additional years, 2024 through 2026. Item H is approving resolution 1522 dash 24, approving an, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Itasca School District and the Village of Itasca for work performed at Peacock School during the roadway and infrastructure project phase number two. And item I is approving resolution 1523 dash 24 regarding an intergovernmental agreement between Elk Grove Village and the Village of Itasca concerning maintenance of black painted traffic signals at Park Boulevard and Devon Avenue. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Just so that you know, in terms of that 19 or 10 West, the, the actual documents, it reflect 19 West 31, so even though you said 10, it's 19.
It is. I checked the same thing, so it is 19.
Okay. There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Daley.
Four.
Trustee Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, trustee Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four. Okay, we have the non-consent agenda, there are three items on that. These we will take separate votes, because I think these were non-unanimous votes. So item A is discussion and possible action regarding approving resolution 1524 dash 24, approving amendment to the pre-annexation agreement for 1460 West Thorndale Avenue. Vijay, do you have any info on that? Or?
Nothing additional beyond what was discussed at the previous meeting.
Okay, any?
Quick question, Vijay, was everybody on board with that, with that, in that, in that area, all the residents?
Yes.
Everyone's on board? Okay. Just wanted to reconfirm.
Any other questions? Not, if then I could have, if I could have a motion to approve resolution.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four. Item B was discussion, discussion and possible action regarding approving resolution 1520 dash 24 for enhanced, enhanced networks professional services agreement for a one-year contract extension of support services, resolution 1360 dash 22. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have just a comment, just to continue from where I, my discussion from last meeting. Just in general, I would not support contracting out IT services until we have an in-house IT director position to vet these projects, purchases, and contracts. I currently feel we are paying too much for these services to an outside contractor. That's just my comments. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Now, if there is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Leahy absent, trustee Maderas.
Against.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
And Mayor Prine.
Four. And then item C is discussion and possible action regarding approving resolution 1521 dash 24 for the enhanced networks professional service agreement for the Public Works Skaten Network, resolution 1361 dash 22.
One more comment here again. Again, I would not support contracting out IT services until we have an in-house IT director position to vet these projects, purchases, and contracts. I feel we are currently paying too much for these services to an outside contractor. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, if I could have a motion?
Moved.
Motion is, and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Maderas.
Against.
Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, and Mayor Prine.
Four. And then we have the payment of bills through March 19th, 2024. Trustee Daley.
Thank you, Mayor Prine. In front of us in our packet is the record of bills for this evening's meeting. The payroll expenses in the total of $241,219.19, checks totaling $772,166.16, and finally, credit card charges for $4,687.59. The record of bills total for this cycle is $1,018,072.94. In the payments over $50,000, there are four bills totaling 45% of the total, and those four bills are to the Page Water Commission in the amount of $178,188.11. Henrickson and Co. for $109,347.56. Robinson Engineering for $101,397.97. And Republic Services in the amount of $72,068.92. The payment register has been prepared as normal, and do we have any questions regarding the record of bills? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Powers absent, Ayani.
Four.
Daley.
Four.
Givanas.
Four.
Leahy absent, Maderas.
Four.
Four. Is there any new business to come before the board? Any old business? We'll go to Department head reports, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick matters. I would extend my appreciation to Mayor Prine and Village Administrator Ergo for attending the Citizens Police Academy graduation last, last week. There were 14 residences and/or persons who worked in our, in our town that attended over the six to seven week curriculum, and I got a lot of really, really good feedback. In fact, I had, got a couple of letters on my desk just the last day or two, handwritten from residents thanking us for hosting the class, and obviously said a lot of good things about the PD. So it was a big hit, and we plan on doing it, at least on a yearly basis, and maybe even bi, you know, bi-yearly if we get enough persons who want to attend. The other thing is, over the next two days, starting tomorrow being Wednesday and Thursday, I had reached out to Metro a little while back about their program called Operation Lifesaver. You know, with the warm weather coming upon us in the spring and in the summer, and the trains, you know, sometimes it can be a situation we don't want to have to address. So anyways, I brought the schools in, and we reached out to Metro, and like I said, they have their program that teaches at appropriate grade levels, both at Benson, Franzen, and eventually Peacock. So I will be attending those over the next couple of days, and I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be a big hit with the kids, but hopefully it's some, some life lessons learned too. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Rain barrels are still on sale if anybody's interested in them. So far, we have had nine residents take part in it, and we had 14 barrels.
barrels that are basically spoken for through the program. Just an update on the water meter AMI project. We're at 82% completion thus far, and if it keeps at its similar pace as it has been, we should be seeing hopefully a closeout in mid-April. We should be about reaching 100%. And we, the thank yous keep coming in from residents that we reach out to for leaks. One really drastic issue that arose was School District 10, Peacock School, had a leak, and we notified them of some pretty heavy usage at their building, and it started, I think we saw that it started like 2:00 in the morning, kind of an odd hour for a school, and they actually had an open three-quarter inch line just going into a sun pump that they didn't know was running. It, some piping rotted or corroded and fell off into the sun pump and was basically losing water. So they, they ended up using about 78,000 gallons in that time period, and we called them to notify them that they had a leak going on, so. As, School District was very happy about that, that we notified them that soon, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if I could just add to my, to Mike's report, I had my water meter changed out on March 8, and I was extremely happy with the service we got from the contractor working for Corn Main, very professional, timely, said 10 o'clock, he was there 10 o'clock, took care of it, was out in 15 minutes, and I feel good that we made that choice to go to that contractor based on my personal experience with that. So I'm glad to hear other people are also happy with what's going on. Just a follow-up, though, on the Peacock deal. So on that, Mike, how do we handle billing for that 78,000 gallons of water? Do we just report that as spent water and not bill it, or like?
That comes over to me.
Well, it, well, and it may, but typically, it goes through our meter, and it would be billed out as normal procedure unless, you know, a special.
Yeah, so it's, so when somebody has a, it's something that goes beyond double their usage, and it's a break, it comes to me to do kind of an evaluation. And so I have it in front of, like, I'm currently doing it with the school district. So if it falls within a threshold, we can actually, internally, we have a process that we can give a credit. This one, because of, it's a business and businesses, we, it would come before you most likely to ask you to provide that credit. So right now, I, I'm just going to assess where it is and then talk to the school district, and if we need to bring it back to you, we will.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanne?
No report.
Vijay?
Yes, I do have a few items. The first one is trustee Givanas, and I attended the chamber board meeting last week. They announced the annual mayor's speech is scheduled for October 9 at the Weston Hotel. The chamber is also celebrating their 45th anniversary with a gala event on October 18. The next item is AIT Worldwide Logistics, they applied for a sign variance at Two Pierce Place. It's going to be a wall sign that requires a variance. It's going to the Plan Commission tomorrow night. And the next item is MEI Systems at 200 Pierce, they applied for the permit. If you recall, the village board granted them extension till June 1 of this year, so they're in for the permit already, and the construction is supposed to take like 12 months once they start the actual construction. The last item, building permits update for February. Community Development issued 56 building permits, completed 90 inspections with a total valuation of $8.2 million. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vijay. Carrie Anne?
So just wanted to let you know that at the end of last week marked one year anniversary that CPKC, the merger was approved, so we were essentially one year into that seven year oversight period now. We have a meeting with, we being the coalition members, all of them have a meeting with CPKC this Thursday, as none of the mitigations have been put into place to date. That's all I have right now.
There was an interesting article on Monday in the Daily Herald where they were comparing how CPKC has handled their reporting of instances compared to when they did the, the EGA up in Barrington. And they said that one in Barrington, they were very open, you could find the information, they disclosed everything. With CPKC, they're disclosing it, but they're like hiding it on their website. You need to be a computer sleuth to find it on their website, so.
Shocking, shocking.
But yeah, you hear CPKC saying, oh, we're doing everything we told you we would. Jody, anything to report? Chuck?
Yes, just a reminder that I did send out a notification on Friday that the US Supreme Court decided an important social media case for public officials. Anyone has any questions about that, please let me know.
All right. We do not need a closed session tonight, correct? Chuck? So if there's nothing else to come before the board, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ayani.
Four.
Givanas?
Four.
Leahy absent. Maderis?
Four.
Powers absent, and Mayor Prine.
Four. Always getting unanimous vote on that.